Good evening, everyone. Before we begin tonight, I'd like to say on behalf of our city council and entire city staff, we'd like to extend our condolences to Officer Lee on the loss of his wife, Brianna. Our thoughts and prayers are with you and your family at this time. And if you'd stand to join us in the Pledge Allegiance, and please stand for the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Would you bow, please? Heavenly Father, for this beautiful city in which we live, we're grateful. For all city staff taking care of operations, answering questions, and keeping every citizen informed, we're grateful. For public service personnel and officers keeping each of us safe, we're grateful. And as we give thanks, we also ask your healing hand on those who are sick, on those who grieve, and tonight especially on Officer Lee and his family who have lost this precious loved one. As council members, we ask for wisdom as we hold in our hands decisions which affect the lives of many. We pray this prayer in the name of our Savior Jesus. Amen.
We've called a order, our January 20th council meeting. And I'll consider an approval for the tonight's agenda. Are there any changes, additions, or revisions? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion. Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the motion. We have no guests and visitors tonight, so we have in our packets the council meeting draft minutes from our January 6th meeting. Are there any changes, revisions, or motions on those?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the motion. No informational items tonight. Any announcements? No one signed up for public input. We'll move with consent agenda. I will read the items on the consent agenda. As usual, if there are any item on the consent agenda that anyone would like to remove for further discussion, we will remove that to old business for more discussion. Item A, approval of neighborhood parking control program. Item B, approval to award a task order to Atkins for engineering services to relocate a water line on State Route 140 at Avery Road. Item C, approval of resolution of support for Keep Cherokee Beautiful initiatives in the city of Canton. And item D, approval of appointment of Atkins City Manager for 2022, Mr. Nathan Ingram. Any items that would like to be removed? Motion to approve and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the consent agenda. Move into old business. So we have one item. Item A, discussion and possible action on cases MPA 2105-004 and CUP 2105-005 for master plan amendment and conditional use permit approval of Pod I, Riverstone. Mr. Green?
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council. As you just stated, this is a request for a master plan amendment for Pod I at the Riverstone development. That's cases MPA 2105-004 and CUP 2105-005. Basically, the request is they would like to amend Pod I for their particular parcel only to move multifamily use from office as it is currently listed in the master plan under residential. They're asking to increase the density from six dwelling units to eight dwelling units. They're asking that the minimum house size shall be decreased from 2,400 square feet to 700 square feet. The setbacks, they're asking for a 50-foot front, 40-foot side, 40-foot on the rear. They're asking that the multifamily structures be limited to a maximum of five stories with a maximum height of 70 feet. They had also requested that the development be allowed a single means of ingress and egress. I believe y'all have received an email from Mr. Peppers explaining why that cannot be done due to the International Fire Code. They require anything over 200 units to have two means of ingress and egress. Now, the staff has recommended the condition that the applicant be required to adhere to the International Fire Code. And in reading the minutes from the, I believe it was a December 12th meeting, or the last meeting that they were here, Ms. McGrew would ask about the possibility of allowing a group in to search the property for native and endangered plant species. And the applicant was agreeable to that. So as an additional condition, we are suggesting that that be put in the approval if the application is so approved.
Thank you, Mr. Green. We'll open this up for council discussion.
One more item.
Oh.
Almost got it. Their revised letter of intent is dated 12/30/21. That's where they ask for the maximum height of five stories and 70 feet total. If you so approve this, I would request that you particularly mention that dated a letter of intent, which was 12/30/21.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll chime in. Who would like to start?
Mr. Tolan.
I'll start it, anyway. So this, this project has been under consideration for a while. It's been vetted as much, if not more than any project that I've seen since being on council for the last two years. The need that it addresses is wide and covers not only Canton but the surrounding county and perhaps even counties to the south and north. It's a solution for senior affordable housing, which we really don't have in Canton. We have high-end affordable, excuse me, high-end housing for seniors, but it's not affordable. You know, you're talking $3,000 to $5,000 a month. This is based on AMI. The units are extremely attractive, having gone with a couple of council members, Ms. Schmidt and Mr. Carlin, to the Dominion facility in Ithonia. I think they would agree that this is an extremely attractive solution. The units all have granite countertops, stainless steel appliances, luxury vinyl flooring, amenities such as a media room, craft room, a small garden, dog park. There's also a bocce ball court even in the back, in the back of the facility. So that's kind of the Dominion way when they build these projects. And I've done quite a bit of research across the country, and it's fairly pervasive that this is the type of product these guys build. So I am very much in favor of this project. I think it solves a lot of issues. It's 251 units and extremely affordable, so I just, you know, there's a lot of points that I would like to make, and I don't want to belabor it, but it is a solution that, that solves a lot of gaps in our, in our housing stock.
Thank you, Mr. Tolan. I'd say I've thought about it a lot. Also, I agree, is a quality development. I think we've discussed it several times. We, we wished it was located somewhere else, but it is where it is, and it does meet the needs of our housing studies, senior affordable housing, which we don't have, which meets a, a, a big need in our roadmap. So if we're following our roadmap, as far as our citizens' needs, we have the citizens' needs regardless of ward. And I think about the citizens in that ward who, you know, have a lot of, enjoy a lot of amenities in the city of Canton. And I think about the citizens that would be living in this, in this complex and, and what that benefits it would bring to them, and that, that means a lot to me, and I think it would benefit the city and the citizens that, that really needs our housing. Ms. Wilson?
I make a motion to approve the project with three conditions. The first condition is to deny the request for a single-point ingress/egress and require the project to meet the 2018 International Fire Code. The second condition is to limit it to seniors with the income limits described in the application. And the third condition is to allow the removal of endangered plant species on site.
Mr. Green, did you say the motion would need to include the letter of intent on the?
I think that would be wise, that, that that letter of intent, that was dated 12/30/21, would be included because that also lists their development criteria and what they are seeking for in the master plan amendment.
You would like to add that, too? Okay. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Ms. McGrew?
May I ask Ms. Wilson a question, please?
Certainly.
Ms. Wilson, in your second condition upon it being a senior development and remaining low income, do you mean that for the entirety of its existence?
Perpetuity, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm one of the three that went to Ithonia to check this out, because we had some good meetings with the applicant, but it's nothing like laying your eyes on a project and seeing, seeing firsthand what it is. And to knock on the, knock on the wood and kick the tires, as it were. We had conversations with residents, had conversations with property managers, had property, a brief conversation with a janitor. Everything works in favor of this project. The question of quality, the question of performance is not a question I have anymore. I believe this is exactly what we need. I think that the fire code requirement, I certainly need to meet fire code, and there's no question about that. Certainly want, you know, appreciate staff has already been working on trying to sort out what that's going to look like. So that's, that's great. As far as the limitation for senior living, it's my understanding they have to record that covenant against the land anyway in the deed, so to, for what they're doing. So that's, that's covered. We make it a condition, it's a little bit like wearing belt and suspenders, but that's all right. We'll have extra protection. The native plant, that's what the applicant wants to do, I'll afford that. This project, though, when I first came to a retreat with this council, we talked about the need for housing, the need for affordable housing, the need for our senior affordable housing. And we all as a group said, this is what we want to do. Now that it's here, I implore everybody to do it. I've struggled to come up with a better analogy than a ladder. I think about it as a ladder. Sometimes in life, you're going up in one direction of the ladder, and sometimes you're going the other direction. If we're missing rungs in that ladder, people can't move from one rung to the other. And we have a missing rung in Canton. This project fills. This project fixes that rung problem. We want to think about it as a pie. Everybody wants a whole pie. And here we have missing pieces of the pie. And now we're going to be adding a piece of pie back in, and I'm happy about that. I appreciate this council and those that are going to live up to the, the commitments that were made, live up to the belief and put our, our money where our mouth is, so to say, that we would say this is the project that fixes something in our community, that helps the community out here, that supports our seniors. This is absolutely the right thing to do. I'm glad it's here, and I appreciate everybody's support for it.
Mr. Waterman?
From Mr. Green. And this may be out of my naivety, but the statement where we're asking for, I guess, an age requirement, how can that be abused? Is there a way that that can be abused? It's, and maybe that's not in our, you know, within our power, but is there some kind of governing, you know, body or something that audits or checks that, those requirements?
Not to my knowledge. We do not go out and check apartments that have rental subsidies to see if that's been adhered to or age limits or restrictions. I would say that is purely a, a self-control action on the apartments themselves.
I normally look for, I, I normally look for holes in, in anything, or, and I used the term yesterday, which seemed to be, I used the word cheat. But, and it's, it, I'm not saying that that's the case. I just look for, you know, opportunities to close gaps, but that's, that's fine. I just, I know that I've heard in some cases where you have senior communities, however, people that don't meet their age requirement are living there. But, but if you, you know, the answer to your, or to my question is that there's not anything that you know of, then that's fine. Thank you.
I'd like to recognize Mr. Patton, who was raising his hand.
Yes, sir. Councilor Waterman, this project is proposed to go through some loan applications through the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. And part of that process, as has been mentioned, will have language with the covenants that are recorded in the clerk of the court's office here in Cherokee County. And with documentation such as that, anyone that lives within the development or any other citizen that becomes aware that they're not adhering to those restrictions and guidelines would have standing to go to court and force that issue.
Mr. Patton? Ms. Schmidt?
Mr. Waterman, also, the questions we asked also, when we wanted to visit the development in Ithonia, and I was just going to say, it's enforced the same way, the covenants and the nature of the area, of course. And I just want to echo what the mayor and Mr. Tolan and Mr. Brown said. I think it's exciting to be able to support a project like this when, when you run a person that you don't know, who really that you're going to get to do the things that you say you want to do. And I think that there, it's ever been more clear, and this is how this group walks the path that we've been talking. I'm going to say it's great.
One point of order, I believe we need to vote on the master plan amendments and the CUP separately. So the conditions go with the master plan amendment?
It implies both.
On both, okay. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that's what we needed to do. So we have a motion and a second on case master plan amendment 2105-004, and we will consider that first, any further discussion before we vote.
With three conditions.
With three conditions, as stated.
Or with the letter of intent?
Yes, with four.
With the letter of intent.
Right. Four conditions.
And that was added with the letter intent dated December?
30th.
30th, thank you. Okay. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All members voted for the motion. We will now consider the CUP 2105-005. That was with four, the same four conditions, and that's for the, for the conditional use permit for the same case. Any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Mr. Green. We'll move on to new business. Item A, discussion and the adoption of the annual update to the Capital Improvements Plan, CIE, and five-year short-term work plan for impact fees. Patton?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council members, I am back before you in regards to the annual update for our capital improvements element, five-year short-term work plan, part of our comprehensive plan because of Canton's impact fee program. We submitted a resolution. It was transmitted to Atlanta Regional Commission, Georgia Department of Community Affairs. They completed their review, sent word to the city that our annual update meets the requirements of state law for adoption. There were three advisory comments. There's a new staff person at DCA. Every time there's a new person at one of the organizations, they always add some advisory comments, if you will. We have addressed two of those advisory comments. We are following up with a DCA staff person in regards to that third advisory comment so we can include specifically what they're looking for in next year's annual update. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? And was this, is this something we would consider for the next meeting, or do you need action on this tonight because of?
No, we can take action at the next meeting. This was a discussion. We don't have to take action, submit it, and hang back to the state until February 28th.
Okay.
That's our deadline date.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Item B, discussion to award a task order to Atkins for engineering services to add an odor control system to the Harmon Field lift station. Mr. Hatabian?
Yeah, this is in somewhat conjunction with the improvements going on at Harmon Field. The lift station is very visible out there, and thought it might be good to kind of put an odor control system on there if you have all these new improvements and, and more, more people at the park. We'll do some minor architectural improvements as well and clean it up some.
Okay. And I believe that was in the amount of $59,757. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Hatabian? And we'll consider this at the next meeting, correct? All in?
Excuse me? Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And item C, discussion to renew the task order agreement contract with Black and Beach. Mr. Hatabian?
Yeah. Three years ago, we gave Black and Beach a task order agreement. Again, non-monetary, it's when we ask them for proposals to do work. That expired in December of last year, and they're, they're doing work for us now under that task order. And I know we've got a couple more tasks for them to do, and so it's just a matter of renewing this, this contract.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Peppers? Got to you quickly tonight.
Good evening. I wanted to update you a little bit on our request for bid process, on our package store licensing. There was a meeting that was in this room last Friday. I believe we had 42 different individuals that signed in for the meeting. So we could theoretically, I guess, have 42 bids that are submitted. Not likely, though. I think it'll be much less than that. I think some of them were here together. They did ask a number of questions at the meeting. We have consolidated those questions and answers into a form that was emailed back out to all of those that participated. They have until Friday to submit any questions in writing to the city, and then we'll respond back to those additional questions the first of next week. The bids are due here next Friday at, by 10 o'clock. As soon as we get to 10 o'clock, we'll bring all the bids down here to the auditorium, and we'll open them publicly and record the bids at that time. Once that takes place, we'll notify the parent high bidder, and they will have until the next, early the next week to provide us with a check, certified check for the bid amount. And then once that's done, they'll have a period of 30 days to submit an application for that first license. So still some questions that are going on, and, and I'm sure we have, we've all been hit up with either attorneys, real estate agents, or potential businesses with ideas and thoughts, and so we've tried to be as transparent with the process as we can. To my knowledge, I think we're the only people who have really done the process this way, but I also think there's lots of cities that are trying to figure out how to do the process. So hopefully, we'll get to lead with excellence and, and show other cities how to do that. Speaking of leading with excellence, as I had mentioned to each of you earlier this week, and emailed out to you earlier today, a draft policy for parental leave. This was something that was discussed at a, a retreat last year, and we had had a conversation about trying to incorporate that in with our benefits plan year that starts in April. But given, given the fact that this is something that we can do even beyond what we provided in our benefits, we've outlined a draft policy that would provide three weeks of paid paternal leave, or what we call parental leave, for employees that could be used within a three, a three-month period after the birth or adoption of a child. I would suggest, if council is willing to, that we do quickly on this, and that we do so in such a way that it's retroactive to January 1st of this year, so that we can go ahead and implement this. I think it'll be good for our employees, be good for our employee families, and it'll be good for recruitment process for the city as well, so.
Is something you want action on tonight?
I think if council's comfortable with it, I think it's great to go ahead and act on it.
I'm certainly on board. It's something I care a great deal about, and three weeks is, is a terribly long period of time, but man, it's a lot better than nothing. So we can build on it in the future. So just need a motion to?
Add it to the agenda.
Add it to the agenda. We'll move to, I'll move to add this to the agenda for our next meeting. Is that correct? February meeting?
Yeah, we can do.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need, I'm sorry, you need to add it to the agenda, then vote on it. I apologize.
You can, you can add it tonight.
I'll add it tonight.
Do it tonight.
Sorry, I was thinking about it. I'm going to trade on next time. Let's, I'll move to add the parental leave policy discussion and action to tonight's agenda. Thank you.
A motion and a second to add the item to tonight's agenda for discussion on that item? All in favor, say aye.
Well, Mr. Peppers and management, thank you for your leadership on this. This is a very important facet of what we offer as a city. Not only is it great for attracting new employees, but it's fantastic for employee retention. So appreciate your, and everybody's leadership on it.
Okay, great. So all in favor of adding the item to the agenda for discussion and votes? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? All members voted for the motion. So now we will add that item to the agenda, and for any further discussion or comments.
Because we'll wait till you get to end of yours, I mean.
I'm done.
But you want to do it now? You could, you can, if I interrupt you?
No, I'm done. I'm done.
I agree with what's, what's been said. It's, I think it's a, a, a great addition to our employee benefits and speaks highly of our city's leadership and staff, and I think it'd be a great asset and proud to support it, so.
Absolutely. I mean, this is something that I absolutely agree with, Mr. Tolan. The, the retention aspect of this, the, the leadership of this, this is something that, you know, is following the, the, is following the science, is following the, the need for strong families and the ability for parents to be able to spend that time bonding with a child and not worried about work, not worried about money coming in. Let's build, we build strong families. We're able to continue, we'll build strong societies, so very proud of this.
If it was good enough for April, it's good enough for January 1st, I think.
I agree with that, so. So I'll make a motion to adopt, to adopt the parental leave policy retroactive to January 1st, 2022.
Second.
Some motion?
Ooh.
Second? Who would like to second?
Rock, paper, scissors, shoot.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. All members vote for the motion.
I have one other item, and that is to let you know that next Monday, the request for proposals for solid waste services will go out, sanitation. So we are officially opening the door for sanitation.
Awesome.
And a short meeting's happening?
Siding.
That's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Mr.? Any questions for Mr. Peppers? Thank you.
Thank you.
I know council introduced items in the approval agenda, just checking. I only have one short thing. It's just reminding everyone that I'll deliver the state of the city address at our next meeting, February 3rd. And I've just been kind of compiling all the things that this council has accomplished the past year. And I tell you, I'm going to have to do a lot of editing because the list is long. So every time I think I have it completed, I think of 10 other things to put on there. So we will go through that, and I look forward to delivering that and delivering that news and talking about all the things we've got on the agenda for this year. And a lot of those we'll be discussing in our upcoming retreat here in a couple weeks. So look forward to that. So, and with that, I'll entertain, before that, I want to just warn Mr. Waterman that, once again, this is not typical, but, but you must be our good luck charm. We have two meetings in a row. I think this one may be shorter than the last meeting, so, so welcome aboard, Mr. Waterman.
We're going to keep you after these two.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Way to go, everybody. This is fantastic.